Good evening. As Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the February 18th, 2025 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent and I are pleased to have you join us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening has been posted as required by law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are a time when a Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cellphones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. This will now be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 18 de febrero 2025. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complace en que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Sé que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Our next item tonight is our oath of office. So we are going to, tonight, vote on our ninth member of the Board, Ms. Krista Estrada-Perez. We look forward to working with her on many projects currently ongoing and those to come. As a reminder, the process included a call from the public for applications, which was open for over a month. We received seventeen applications in total. All applications were reviewed by the full Board, and our top four candidates were interviewed in executive session. We are grateful for all the applicants and their enthusiasm to serve on the Hartford Board of Education. With that, there is a motion that the Hartford Board of Education appoint Ms. Krista Estrada-Perez as a board member through December 2025, the remainder of the term of the vacant elected board member seat. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I wanted to add for everyone viewing here and at home that we had a rather long process among us as board members. This seat became vacant about thirteen months ago in January of 2024. Before we actually even took in applications and put the call out publicly, we sat down, discussed what are the strengths that we bring to this Board and what strengths do we want in a new potential board member. We discussed that, we had a list, and when we did put out the application, we sat together again, reviewed every single applicant together. And from the seventeen applications, we extended five interviews, four of whom came and we interviewed, and the candidate you see today is the person we all selected. And we do feel strongly that she does bring qualities to strengthen this Board and to allow us together as a body to better serve the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays? Absentions? All right, the ayes have it. Krista, would you like to say any words?
I am a very proud graduate of Hartford Public Schools. I went to Weaver and I went to Canelli, and I am glad to be here. I'm happy to be here talking about education, how important our public school systems are. And as somebody who graduated from these very neighborhoods, I'm just very excited to be here to see what best ways we can serve our students and just to really be a beacon of what public education is and how important it is for our students, having been one of those students who graduated, and loves the district that I come from, and the friendships and the people that I met through it. So excited to be here, longtime Hartford resident, graduate, and excited to usher in this new way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam. Yes, Madam Chair, I was looking at the agenda, I was going to ask, in lieu of a missing member, whether we could do a public dialogue before the official election?
Let's see, why not? Christina, is that okay? Yes, yes, we'll move public comment up. Thank you, Tyrone. Before we move on to public comment, Krista will be sworn into office. Sorry. Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. Mr. Mills?
We, as a Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously. In that end, staff will follow up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, this will be read in Spanish by Christina.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Our first speaker tonight is Evelyn Lafontaine.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. My name is Evelyn Colong Lafontaine. I'm a resident of Hartford and I live at 34 Goodman Circle. I am here this evening to address the Policy Committee report regarding the proposed revision of the policy for naming of school facilities or parts of school facilities. I would like to thank the members of the Policy Committee for your diligent work in reviewing and amending the current policy. I have watched several of the Policy Committee meetings on Zoom, and I believe that you have done a thoughtful and thorough job in carefully drafting revisions to the policy. Consequently, I support the adoption of the proposed policy that is being presented this evening. As you know, I am a member of the committee that has presented a proposal requesting that the Hartford Board of Education approve the naming of a school after Hernan Lafontaine, former Superintendent of Hartford Public Schools. The other committee members who are also here this evening, Calixto Torres, Edwin Vargas, and Louis Robinson, and I, as well as many individuals in the community who support this proposal, are particularly gratified that the revised policy does not include the requirement that an individual must be deceased. We believe that having an individual present to receive the honor and recognition that is being bestowed to him or her is particularly meaningful and fitting. Also, we're even more gratified that Hernan is still here with us. He will be celebrating, believe it or not, his ninety-first birthday in two weeks on March ninth. He continues to be very active, very supportive, and a contributing member of our wonderful city. We have submitted for your review extensive documentation regarding Hernan Lafontaine's history and contribution and leadership as an educator, President of the Hartford City Council, civic leader, and superintendent. Also included in our documentation is a clear rationale why the Classical Magnet Program be named for him, as well as many letters of support and more than a hundred and thirty petition signatures. You have a very long agenda this evening, and the renaming of a school is not the topic tonight. Therefore, I will not elaborate on his qualifications and contributions at this time. That will come later. All I will say is that he has been a dedicated educator who has worked diligently for more than fifty years to improve education for the benefit of all youngsters, regardless of ethnicity, race, and economic background. Again, I thank you for your commitment and the dedicated work that you do for students, teachers, and parents for the Hartford Public Schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edwin Vargas.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the Hartford Board of Education, our Superintendent, and those present here tonight. I'd like to also join in with what Evelyn said, congratulate our Public Policy Committee for recommending that we do away with the requirement that a person be deceased before a facility or a portion of a facility can be named after that person. I've known Hernan for many years. I was a thirty-five-year veteran of the Hartford Public School System, and during twelve of those years, he was our school Superintendent. So, as Evelyn has said, I'm part of the committee that would like to name the Classical Magnet School after him. And so I have a vested interest in congratulating the Policy Committee, and I'm hoping that the entire Board will adopt the changes so that the policy will allow people to receive these honors when they're still alive. I've been to so many of these activities, I've been to so many of these dedication activities where all you hear is the family and the friends say, geez, I wish they were here with us, you know, this would have been such a great moment for them, but unfortunately, they were deceased and they couldn't enjoy it. But I remember before this policy was enacted and we were able to name facilities for living people, my friend and former mayor, Thurman Milner, I remember how proud he was. He called me up and said, Ed, they're going to dedicate the Vine Street School in my honor. I'd like you to be there. And I remember being there with Thurman, and I remember just how proud he was about the fact that the city had honored his service to this city by naming a school after him. And many years later, as a matter of fact, he was still alive, which is surprising because we all thought he was going to pass away much sooner, but he didn't. He hung in there. And many years later, the school was refurbished, and there was a rededication, and he called me again and said, Ed, they're going to have a rededication of the school. Can you please come? And I said, sure, I'd be happy to be there. And again, it was a wonderful occasion. He just passed away maybe like a month and a half or two months ago, but I can still remember how he was beaming over the fact that the city had honored his service. So there's so many people that this community loves and that we want to show our love to them, and I think it's important that we do so while we still have them with us. So I urge the Board as a whole to please adopt the policy recommendation. Thank you very much.
Janet Sorano.
Good evening, everyone. I do not want to be up here. I don't. It tears me up to be up here. I have tried very hard to avoid this. January 2024, Leslie called me into her office. She asked me for a favor. May, I couldn't do it anymore. I went out on leave. First time in my career, I went out on leave. I was a twenty-four. I worked for Hartford Public Schools for twenty-three years. All fives in my evaluations. Had many vacation days, many sick days. I had enough sick days so I can take a full year. I came back in October. In one month, I worked in OTM. In one month, Labor found enough evidence on me to terminate me. In one month, I worked for Hartford Public Schools for twenty-three years. What Labor asked me the last day before I went out on administrative leave, what was the conversation that you had with Leslie? A conversation I had with her in January. And all they cared about was what was that conversation about? I didn't say anything, Leslie, anything. I kept quiet. I didn't say anything. And I was terminated. I tried to resign. I tried to retire, undisabled, and they didn't let me. When you retire, when you resign, you take away, you take that package with me. They didn't let me. I am disabled. I can't even collect unemployment. I can't because I'm disabled. That secret stayed with me, Leslie. I never told anyone what you asked me to do. Never. That secret is still with me, still. Twenty-three years with Hartford, and I'm terminated. I can't even collect unemployment because I'm disabled. I was dedicated, and you took everything from me, and that secret is still with me. One month from May until January 2025, and they found so much evidence. But I had all fives in my evaluation, all fives. My attendance, today I would still be out on FMLA. Thank you. I still hold that secret, Leslie.
Sam Saylor.
I did go to the mayor. He ignored me. I did send an email to every person on the Board, and they ignored me as well.
My name is Sam Saylor. I'm a resident and a taxpayer, and a parent and a grandparent in the Hartford Public School System. I don't know most of you on the Board. You don't know me. But you know the subject matter for which I sit here today in front of you, and it is our children. It looks like we're about to engage in a new leadership change with the same old problems of low performance and low expectations. I thought, being a grandparent, that the problems and the issues are related to the generation that parenting those children. But lately, I've been engaged in conversations with parents about the horrific experience in our school system. Madam Chairman, I heard you mention earlier when you made your opening comments and who you represent. Not in your comment did you mention one parent that you represented. You may want to review that. And I know most of you are appointed by the mayor, and so your allegiances to the mayor. But there's something in this city that you need to understand, and that is that we love our children. And somehow, I also believe we have been convinced that this Board of Education belongs to the parents. The commodity, the value, the treasure that we place in the hands of this district does not imply that we are releasing our children's life to you. Most of you are college-educated. You know the rigor and expectations of succeeding in the world. And you should not be able to sit in that chair or allow yourself to sit in that chair if you're not going to guarantee to our children the best. Teachers have unions, administrators have unions. We are indeed going to become unionized again as parents, organized, weaponized, because we cannot afford to lose any more of our children. And make apologies for failing situations. You know good and well that this state is not giving this district the kind of funds they need to survive, but to create an underclass, a permanent underclass, of children and workers, and we can no longer tolerate that. I'd like to welcome myself back to the game, to get involved. I would love for you to let me know where I can get a dossier or some information on all of your skills and sets while you're sitting on that Board, and I'll do the same of my resources and my experience to you. Thank you.
Li Ping Wong.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Li Ping Wong, and I'm a parent at an official STEM Minute School, and I've been on various PTO boards for the last fourteen years. I currently sit on the North East End Residence and Community Advisory Group. I've been on the Faces Group and now sit on the HPS Parent and Caregiver Engagement Panel, which I encourage any parents who want to join to please contact Hartford Public Schools so they can have more input about what's going on in Hartford Public Schools. While it's great that the Board of Education has all these separate meetings to address all the Hartford Public Schools agenda, but it's only available in English, and it does allow other parents who cannot read, write, or speak to be able to participate or engage with Hartford Public Schools surveys and events. Other languages besides English and Spanish should be provided for all parents and caregivers. My next topic is PTO and SGC. According to the Hartford Public Schools Parent and Community Engagement Policy 1205 and SGC Policy 1211, it talks about how SGC boards need PTOs in the school to be properly elected in every school. Parents are saying that PTOs aren't currently functioning at all schools, and some parents don't even know they hold executive board positions, and some of them don't even know they're on the PTO, which begs to know, was the PTO elections held correctly by parents or were they held by administration? Parents are supposed to be partners in their child's education. SGCs are supposed to be acquired members elected through fair, open, widely-publicized, recorded, and timely election process. How many schools have done both these things this year? Parents cannot be handpicked and placed in SGC just to be a rubber stamp. This information is supposed to be made public at each school. This has definitely not happened at our school because our parents are not even allowed in the building and have not been able to be involved. Next section. Under the Hartford Principal Leadership Academy, you guys have on your agenda tonight, under Creating Connections with Family Sections, or Family Connections, sorry. It's hard to do that when you don't allow parents or caregivers in the building. They can't even talk to the teachers and everybody. So that should be done first before you can be able to connect with anybody. SGC training should be on there. Administration needs to learn the policies and procedures of elections and meetings. There's a Title I law under the Every Child Secedes Act where all parents are supposed to be informed in the way parents can understand and have say in the process of Title I funds at their school. Our parents at our school have not been invited to an election or even seen an agenda all these years and even holding a town hall budget meeting for input. How many other schools are in the same position if they're supposedly all fully seated SGC at their school? Again, where are the data reports on election results, agenda, and minutes for our schools? Parents have a right to review and comment on them to support their children. The other thing should be special education. There should be a review of the FAPE, the IEP 504s, and the IDEA Act law. It's not just about educational grades. It's about adaptive and functional skills of a student so they can be functional member of society. In this training, they should also have how to provide transitioning support at middle school, high school, and even high school to college or also have how to provide transitioning support at middle school, high school, and even high school to college or vocational. Last part is family and community engagement. Individual school communications and notifications to communicate with parents in a timely fashion and not less than 24 hours for regular meetings, even to events to support parents that you expect them to participate, but they don't have enough time to go and plan. Reminders need to go out. The other thing is strategic, school strategic plan and survey. Are they available in other languages besides English and Spanish? How many people can actually fill it out by themselves? Is there support? And if they're not in the other languages, how can you have a possible, accurate report that you have enough people who participate in this survey? And the last part is, when are we notifying parents that, sooner than later, that the school day is now ending a half hour earlier, so they can make proper arrangements with work and daycare and after-school program? We have a lot of single parent caregivers, and then you also need to know that the proposed, because it hasn't been passed yet, professional learning days for teachers will be full days and not half days, and they need to be able to make arrangements. Thank you for your time.
Millie Arciniegas?
This is like 14 years later. So forgive me if I have to now take out my glasses to read. Okay? Because time has passed, and we're still in the same place. My name is Millie Arciniegas. I am a resident of Hartford. I was born and raised in Hartford. I went to Burn School. And then from Burn, I went to Catholic School. And then I went to Buckley. And the reason I did that, well, the reason that my mom chose that, because she chose that, was because she couldn't afford to put me in a private school. So we went to Buckley. So what happened at Buckley? They were wondering why we were so ahead. Right? And over the years, we just started hanging out with our friends, and we weren't challenged. So I graduated as a C student. And I didn't go to college, but I joined the US, United States Navy. And then after that, I pursued college. So I say that because it's time for parents to choose their own destiny for their child. We've waited long enough. And it doesn't take, you know, I used to say, you know, maybe if we get a homegrown superintendent. Since 1999, we've been through like 25 superintendents. And if you don't believe me, go ahead and do your own spreadsheet, because I've been keeping a spreadsheet of that. And this is the only superintendent that really cared for our kids. I could say that. That really went into the community, trying to teach the teachers how to do that. Trying to teach the teachers to break the barriers. Only for them to go back to the same old thing. Right? Who's doing that work? They don't want us to do it. They don't want parents to do it. God forbid. They need to help us. Right? What a thought. I mean, we have so much asset in the Hartford community. We're missing out when you don't look at parents as equal partners. This superintendent has done, has gone over and beyond since when she started till now. She put her whole heart in it and her work. I have never, ever seen a superintendent in the 25 years be so open-door policy. Pick up the phone. You send her an email, you get an email right back. Impeccable evaluations. But then, all I hear up here from the Board is teachers, advisory council in the bylaws. What is that? You're up there to serve the students of Hartford. They have the most to lose. Then comes the parents. Right? So what I see in Hartford Parent University, I see those parents that didn't make it. And now I'm having to increase their capacity and getting them into the pathway to work, to getting an education. When is this gonna stop? And I have this, and I want to mention one thing here that I want you guys to understand. The system is based on property taxes, which you should already know. Right? Okay. Great. Which can vary widely between affluent and disadvantaged areas. Yes, everybody's with me. Okay. The schools that have more students of color are more likely to be underfunded. That is the situation that we have been in for years. Unfixable. Okay? It's gonna take us to fix that. When you guys start understanding that, that's when the work starts. You can't shut us out of the classrooms, out of buildings. She cannot be everywhere. This is the deficit mindset that are in people. In people, the way they think about us. You have to constantly check yourself in order for you to move forward out of that mindset. Who's checking who? Right? She started off with a child abuse report. No mandated reporting happening. Our kids get abused. Oh. I don't know if anybody read that up here, but maybe you should read it, because that's how she had to start. And she did a great job trying to get us to understand that if they continue to send their kids to Hartford schools, that there's going to be a safety plan in place so that our children can feel safe, so that they can learn. All right? You're not gonna find another superintendent like this one. You're not. How much more can a superintendent cut from a budget? Every year, there is a deficit. I saw the budget presentation in more than 130 million in cuts since 2018. Name one other school system in Connecticut that's had to do that. She is, in fact, Superwoman to have to tolerate all this crap that she has gone through for nine years. She has been through five chairmen. Five different boards. Five. Last time I looked, every four years, there's an election. People have been dropping out here and there. Oh, time for retraining. So don't ask when you go out and look for another superintendent and think that you have done your job. Okay? Think about it for a second. If we don't start addressing the real barriers with that superintendent, we're not gonna get anywhere. So we're not excited. We're not excited that, ooh, we're gonna have another superintendent. We're not. Until you address all of these barriers here, we'll have, I'll have it in an email to you. Okay? But one of the biggest ones is teacher seniority. No one wants to talk about it, because it's taboo. Right? Last in, first out. How are we gonna get teachers of color in here? They graduate? They come in here? Does she do paso, pa paso? What happened to paso a paso? Oh. They weren't affected, because it's last in, first out. No, 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 because we're in need of those. We gotta remove it. It doesn't benefit kids. So start there. Start having those tough conversations with these unions that have been up here just like, oh, let me get all of this, and forget them. But in that process, as you're sitting there saying, oh, how can we have a teacher advisory council? As you're sitting there saying that, some of you up there, think about the parents and think about their children, because we're equal partners. Equal partners means equal. So don't sit up there and look at these teachers' union as like they're the next best thing to helping you solve problems. Don't do that. We hear you. Just because they're not here doesn't mean that we can't hear you. And we will keep doing this until, one second, until you guys realize that it's not about the superintendent. It's about these rules, these complex rules that the system has created, and we can't get out of it until we work together to remove them from the system, so our children have a fighting chance to move forward in life. So if you don't know us, who we are, get to know us. Get to know us.
Thank you.
Damaris Bolorin?
Good evening. Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Damaris Bolorin. Soy graduante de las escuelas de Hartford. Al igual que muchos de los padres que están aquí en esta tarde. He venido aquí con el simple propósito de dejar de saber a cada uno de ustedes y a todas las uniones que ya basta. Queremos beca. No queremos base sistema escolar de Hartford. Van demasiado de muchos años y superintendentes han ido y han venido. Y nada ha cambiado. La señora Leslie ha hecho varios, el tiempo que ha estado sí ha tratado de hacer varios cambios, de hacer cosas positivas para mejorar la situación que ella se encontró. Pero no fue suficiente porque no tuvo el apoyo. No tuvo apoyo de las uniones. Y de qué vale. So ya ha llegado el momento de que nosotros como padres nos vamos a unir. Este es solamente el principio para que ustedes todos lo sepan.
The interpreter apologized. There was no request for interpretation, but I'm here to assist. Estoy acá para ayudarle. Está bien? Puede iniciar, por favor, nuevamente le pido disculpa. So I apologize if we can start from the top?
Simplemente, una vez más, mi nombre es Damaris Bolorin.
One more time, my name is Damaris Bolorin.
Y soy graduante de las escuelas de Hartford.
And I graduated from the Hartford Public Schools.
Y estoy aquí con el propósito.
And I am here with the purpose of.
Al igual que los demás padres, de pedir que queremos una beca.
And also, like other parents, we would like to ask for more scholarships.
La señora Leslie hizo lo que pudo.
Ms. Leslie did what she could.
Pero no fue suficiente porque no tuvo el apoyo de las uniones ni de otros dignatarios.
But that was not enough, because she didn't have the support from the unions or from other members.
Así es que les quiero comunicar que desde este momento nosotros vamos a pediar para que se nos des el derecho a las becas.
Therefore, I would like to communicate you and let you know that from now on, we will be fighting so that we can have access to the funding and scholarships.
La beca es lo único que va a arreglar la situación, ya que nada ha mejorado.
The funding is the only thing that's gonna fix this situation, since nothing has changed.
A las uniones que se preparen. Porque nada nos va a parar. Ya no, para nosotros no hay remedio. Esta es la única forma que nosotros podemos ir. No hay de ninguna otra manera.
So the unions, get ready. Because nothing has stopped us. And we have to keep united and continue fighting. There's no other way.
Así es que muchos empleados serán afectados del sistema escolar, porque en el momento que los padres cojan esa beca, ¿quién va a quererse quedar en las escuelas de Hartford? Nadie. Pero sabes que muchos de ustedes lo van a sentir, porque van a querer darnos de todo un poco, pero va a ser demasiado tarde.
And a lot of parents are gonna feel it. Everyone is gonna get affected. Because once we receive those fundings and those scholarships to take our students out of the Hartford Public School systems, then everyone is gonna feel it. You all will feel it.
Ya, ya basta. Queremos la beca. Ya no hay marcha atrás. Y hoy esta noche es solamente la capita encima del bizcocho.
That's enough. We won the scholarships, and there's no going back. And this time, we won the icing on top of the cake.
Así es que la marcha masiva viene. Se lo estamos dejando saber a tiempo. Pero ya nada va a cambiar nuestras mentes.
So there's a massive rally, and we're letting you know. So nothing is gonna change our mind.
De ahora en adelante, nosotros tomaremos el control. Porque ni las uniones, ni la junta directiva nos ha demostrado que tienen el mejor interés para nuestros hijos.
From now on, we will take control. Because the unions or the board of directors have not support us.
Esto es lo que hay. Así es que espero que ustedes sepan que vamos para adelante, no vamos a dar marcha atrás. Y a todos los padres de Hartford, les quiero dejar saber que cuando vayamos a hacer la marcha masiva, que se unan para que podamos conseguir unanimemente las becas y tomar la decisión de nuestros hijos, de la educación de nuestros hijos.
So this is it. There's no going back. And we will continue moving forward. And we would like to let every parent in Hartford, let them know that when we have the rally, to come with us. Because once we get those scholarships, we're gonna take our children out of Hartford, and we're gonna take care of our children's future.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Michael Downs?
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'm a citizen of Hartford, and also I'm president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. First thing I want to address is W-2 forms. Many of the substitute teachers and all that I have spoken to have not received their W-2 forms as yet. I checked with the treasurer's office. They were printed. And they were sent to the city payroll. Checked with city payroll. City payroll sent them to the payroll of the Hartford Public Schools. And checked the Hartford Public Schools payroll. They said they were mailed out, so I checked with the post office. The post office did say with so many W-2 forms, they still could be delayed. And this year, it was slower than most years. and this year it was slower than most years. So they asked me to wait a week. I'll wait till Thursday or Friday, and then I will report back to the security department of the post office, and there will begin an investigation. Because since 1913, people have been sent, mailed records of their income tax being paid or the income tax that they owe. And that was the year that the Congress and the president signed a statute allowing income tax. Also, another issue I wanted to discuss is the school choice. School choice should be by pure lottery. Students' names should be put into a box if they apply to a school, put into a box. The box should be shaken up, and somebody, the person that chooses the students should be blindfolded, and they fortuitously choose the names of the students for that school. And that's just the way it was set up. That's the way the magnet school system was set up, and that's the way it should be. And they should not be chosen by student's ability, but chosen by lottery. And finally, the naming of a school after a living person. Just because a person lives a long time doesn't mean that we can't name a school after them. That was the way it's always been. There were many schools and buildings and gyms and auditoriums were named after living people for years. And it wasn't until they started naming buildings and schools and other auditoriums and gymnasiums after minority people who happened to come up into the Hartford political system, up through the political system, and made a name for themselves and did a lot of good for the citizens of Hartford. And they started naming buildings or schools and other entities after them, that the Board of Education, I guess, decided to change the rule, and the rule should be changed back. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent of the Board of Education and Board of Education members. My name is Natalie Langlais. I'm a Hartford resident since 2014. Not familiar with many of the faces on the board. I would just say, by way of recap, I served on the Equity 2020 Committee in an attempt to do school consolidations. I served on the search committee that brought in Dr. Torres, and I also served on the superintendent's Community Advisory Committee. This evening, I am here, I am here because my journey with Hartford Public Schools has been really a tough one. And, you know, through different things, I had experience. I had to pull my son out of the public school system, and I had to put him in a private So he is currently back in the public school system at University High School of Science and Engineering, and he's doing okay. He's doing okay. The one primary concern I have is the low expectations of the teachers. All right? You're telling my child that a grade D is a pass. We often speak of cultural competency. I'm from Trinidad and Tobago, and a grade D ain't no pass. I just go dialect like that. It's not a pass. And it's a simple thing, right? But let me tell you, there's a big upheaval in my household where I'm telling my son, well, you need to put in the extra studies, you need to go in in the morning and make use of the advisory groups or the teacher groups that they're there to help, and it seems as if I've hit a wall, because the teachers told him a D is a pass. So this brings me around to the education system where we have students of color not being really connected to their teachers. The teachers are not really connected to the students, are not connected to the parents. And so a lot of our needs fall by the wayside. We come here and we say the same thing repeatedly. We want to see teachers of color. We want to see direct pathways so that there could be more teachers of color in the system. We want to have more teacher accountability, and that high expectation for our students, I just cannot understand how we could have such an organized system that's been failing us for so long, and we keep doing the same things over and over. So some things need to be done differently, and I'm telling you, for things to be done differently, you need parent voices at the table. You need to have parent voices at the table so that we can tell you exactly what we go through. When I have to pay a private school fee, I have to choose between buying food or paying my light bill. Okay? It's just like 12 months now, I have finally caught up to paying my light bill because I had to pay school fees. And then I come to the Board of Ed, and I'm like, the reason why we had to leave was not our fault. It was through systemic issues. How can you help? You cannot help, because the magnet schools are closed off, and when he leaves this subpar performance school, the only other school is another neighborhood school that is not appropriate and not fit for my child. So I am here to reiterate once again, let the money follow the child. Let the money follow the child. School choice is a parental right. It is my right to choose where I would like my child to be educated, and so the money should follow the child to ensure that the child is fully educated. The failing schools, the unchanging achievement gap, the lack of connectedness between parents and teachers and teachers and students, it's enough already. We need parents to be at the table of decisions so that we could have a say. Stop creating like a package and then presenting it to us. All right? You spoke, and again, I want to reiterate what someone said. There was no mention of parents, there was no mention of families. Here's a board rejoicing about students. Students from where? They have parents, we have families. You know, we have Caribbean families, we have Puerto Rican families. We want to see our students succeed. We want our high schoolers to come out reading and writing. We want them to be able to pass a college entrance examination. Things are getting tougher in this country, and we as parents are saying, we want change. We want change. We want to see it now. We want to see parents at the table where we could have a voice in what's happening for our children. Dr. Leslie Torres, thank you so much for your service. I appreciate what you have accomplished in your time, and I wish you all the best going
So good evening, everyone. My name is Gwen Samuel, and first and foremost, I am a mom and a grandma. I'm also the president and the founder of the Connecticut Parents Union. I work with parent leaders across the state of Connecticut to protect the educational rights of children. I wanted to show you, because I was looking at your program, the Say On Task with your agenda, and on April 25th, 2010, I had the distinct pleasure of working with Millie Arciniegas before this was a thing, if you will, meaning the Hartford Parent University. At the time, we were trying to get the law passed for the very school governance that are in your agenda. So parent leaders within the state of Connecticut have worked together to ensure that parents have the right to work with you, because they're children. Right? And I want to say to you that people tell me all the day that, Gwen, why do you go up to Hartford? They are a lost cause. This is what the conversations are about, Hartford. You're not just Hartford, the city, you are the capital. You are the fourth poorest city in the country, which is an oxymoron, right? Because we are one of the wealthiest states in the country. And so what goes to even step further is, I understand where the parents are coming from, because you have the authority to actually do right by your children, irregardless of the state. Now, you may say, well, you get state money. But I will tell you, Hartford is one of the few cities out of Bridgeport, New Haven, that has actually made its own construction framework so that you wouldn't discriminate against your own minority contractors. And why do I say that? Meaning, you do have the power. If you did want it to put your children first, because in your Hartford Leadership Pipeline program, right underneath it, you say the whole child. But I don't see where the whole child is here. But you have the ability to do so if you consider scholarships. Now, forget the political rhetoric. School choice is a very politicized term. Right? So let's focus on education choice. But let's look at it in regards to you being the fourth poorest city with some of the lowest performing students in the state, and you can actually create a mechanism that can allow you to do what is best for the individual child, and it wouldn't really impact your budget. Right? But if you put the politics in it, it will. But if you say a child that has special needs, and you have a school like Natalie, the fact that this mom had to come out of her pocket, which is the right thing to do, because she put her child first, the problem is, she's also a taxpayer. So she pays into the system, so she expected a return on her investment when it came to her child, but it did not occur. But we still can make this a positive moment. You can look at scholarships. I've worked with education choice. I've worked with other states, Rhode Island. There are cities in this state that are using this as a best practice, because you do have students that are leaving your judicial system, they're leaving your prison system, and they're struggling in your classroom. And what you do is expend them, just suspend them, the whole state does, not just you. Right? They suspend them. But if you were to create equity scholarships, that means you're looking at the child, allowing that child to have their per pupil allocation, and that child would get what they need, you get what you need, meaning a classroom that can function, the child is getting, and then parents wouldn't have to make a choice, which you shouldn't have to under Article 8, which is the Constitution, which protects the educational rights of not only Natalie's students, but all of Hartford's students. So let's not make this, I know it feels like attacking, right? It feels attacked, because you will always be attacked, but you ain't the only ones attacked. School boards across the country are attacked, especially when you make it about you and not about us, not about the community and their families and their children. But you have a diverse board, intergenerational, you have the opportunity to lead in Connecticut where Connecticut does not, because you have, you do it in construction, and you have, under great leadership of your superintendent, you work together, you can do this, and it will not impact your budget like you do, if you choose to put politics first. So that's all I'm asking you to do, as a supporter of you, understanding, this was the first article. We've been at this for 14 years. Millie is right. Steve Goody trying to get you to put Connecticut, I mean, put your students first, and I get it. You are dealing with other politics, because you are not only the capital, right? You're also the poorest, like I said, the fourth poorest district in the country. But that doesn't mean that has to be what defines you. So we're here as a body to work with you. Now, if you don't, that's when your protests come. Now, you thinking you don't have to care about protests, but we shouldn't have to, because I want to believe you have the best interests of your students at heart, and they want what's best for their children. And we should never have a Natalie, where they have to come out of their pocket to pay for their child's education, and she's already paid through her tax. So Natalie had taxation without representation, because you did not represent her student, her child, fairly. But we have the opportunity now, and all I'm saying is, I'm putting out the olive branch, the Connecticut Parents Union, anyone else. If you want to work to improve your system, we are here, because I'm tired of people telling me that you are a lost cause, and as long as you've got Connecticut's children in your possession, there is nothing lost about Hartford or any of the students in it. My name is Gwen Samuel, and I approve that message. Thank you. I couldn't resist.
Good evening, members of the board, student representative and superintendent of schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a proud Hartford resident. I am proud of the Hartford Public School system that I'm a product of and that I have taught in for 30 years, and I am currently president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers, which is a union. I'm upfront about it. So first, I would like to welcome Crista Estrada Perez. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to see a full nine-member complement of the Board of Ed, and I thank you very much for joining the important work of being on a board of education and committing to our students here in Hartford. On tonight's agenda, the Family and Community Engagement Committee report includes a presentation of the proposed district school calendars for the next two years. These calendars were a result of a new process this year, which utilized a committee structure composed of many stakeholders. As indicated in the report, the committee consisted of district and school-based staff, union representatives, and parents. You were included, parents. You got it. I'm all for including parents. Because a process was employed, this process resulted in draft calendars for the next two years that have the support and buy-in from all committee members. Next, a survey was sent out to various stakeholders soliciting feedback on the draft calendars. The question that received the highest agreement was a built-in snow day at 85%. That's statistically very, very good. So I urge the board to approve the calendars presented to you on February 6th, which include the March makeup day in case of snow, and by your approval, validate and support the process and work of the calendar committee. The second item I wish to speak to is the superintendent's search. It was only a few weeks ago that Superintendent Torres Rodriguez announced that she was leaving Hartford Public Schools. To Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, I thank you for your years of service that you have given to Hartford, and I wish you very well in your future endeavors. Obviously, the superintendent's resignation necessitates a search for a new superintendent, which is on your agenda this evening. As a taxpayer and as a union president, I fully support the board's pursuit of a local search and not a national search. Given the complex issues that continue to face Hartford Public Schools, many of which have been pointed out this evening in public comments, I urge the board to seek out a candidate from within our own district or who has experience with our district. In fact, be sure they have over 10 years' experience with Hartford schools or somehow connected to Hartford schools, and that they have classroom experience themselves. I know firsthand that there are plenty of potential candidates right here in the Hartford area that fit that bill, and if they all apply, you will have ample candidates from which to choose. I also ask the board to include some method by which other stakeholders can have input into the selection process. Eight years ago, that came in the form of a community interview attended by hundreds of people. Whether you take that approach again or design some other method, it is important to allow many stakeholders of our public school system to have some input and voice in this process, including our unions, our school government councils, our parent organizations, such as we heard from this evening, families, community members, elected officials, student advisory councils, and more. Our students need effective leadership, and the way to achieve that is certainly through an inclusive process. I would also like to just say that I applaud democracy in all of its facets, and I want to acknowledge that this evening, we are here witnessing democracy at its best. We are hearing from a variety of people, not all of whom everybody in this room, I'm sure, agreed with. I took some points that were stabbed at me. The board took some points stabbed at them. I do agree with everybody who said we have to work together, but at the bottom line, we all need to be heard, and that's what democracy is about, and thank you for giving Hartford the opportunity to do that every month in your public comments. Thank you. Thank you.
I believe Hiya Cynthia is left, but just making sure Hiya Cynthia is not back in the room. If not, then Levy Cardulis.
My name is Levy Cardulis. I was a employee for Hartford Public Schools, head custodian for 26 years, first black union president to represent the custodians' food service and trades. Okay, so I wasn't going to come to the Board meetings about this, but Ellis died, and Ellis was my brother, and Ellis was responsible for the Carrie Saxon Perry mural that we have at Sand's right now. I was the co-organizer. My wife does Ray Primus, also the co-organizer. She was a teacher of fifth grade at Sand, and she came to me with this amazing project. And we included Trinity with Cher and the young ladies over there, just did a remarkable job at doing the research and interviews about Carrie Saxon Perry. It was so hard to get that project done. Three years. It was a fight to get it done. We jumped through every lava hoop that you guys put out in front, and we was finally able to get that done. And then I get a call that they saw the Carrie Saxon Perry mural, and it was on Hartford Public School website, for Black History Month. And then it struck a chord in me. It struck a chord in me, Leslie. I mean, all the work that we did, all the work that those young ladies did at Trinity College, and we had a basic foundation for a curriculum. We don't even do that. So I just want to make sure, because Ellis died unexpectedly, that Ellis gets his flowers, period. This is beautiful work, and if it wasn't beautiful work, you certainly wouldn't put it on your website, because it's beautiful. And we're ready to do some more beautiful work. I've got some other things in the mix, but I wouldn't have to jump through fire hoops any longer to get these beautiful projects done that everybody's looking at, everybody want to talk about. Because whatever I do, I know some people don't like me, I couldn't care less, but what I do has always been great, period, because I am that parent, and my kids all went to these schools here. So I just got to say, because of the Carrie Saxon Perry, can we rename Sand School Carrie Saxon Perry Elementary? I mean, that makes sense. That really makes sense. And, you know, we don't have to get into this alive or dead or whatever. That makes a lot of sense. LaFontaine, I was hired in 1990. LaFontaine was my boss, so I am truly a part for that. Also, you had, in your superintendent report dated June 6, 16, 2024, in the update, you had wrote that you were at the ceremony when we did the Carrie Saxon Perry mural. As the project manager, you know, I'm always in the background and I'm watching everybody. I did not see you, Leslie. I did not see you. And the very last thing I want to talk about is charter reform. And this is what you heard a lot of parents talking about, poor black and brown communities' democratic rights are taken away when one individual can appoint five of the nine board members. This doesn't happen in any white community at all. This needs to change, and it's called charter reform, because you need a fully elected Board of Education, not anybody who's appointed. So once we have a fully elected Board of Education, I do believe we could start getting things back on track in the city of Hartford. Leslie, congratulations, and again, strength and power.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished Board members. While this is going to be a tough night, but let's just start with Black History Month. And I used to wear, when I first started addressing the Board, T-shirts of Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, Marcus Garvey, people that I found as my ancestors to be important and influential. And during Black History Month, you know, we try to stress, and I want to appeal to everyone's, you know, soul about making your ancestors proud. Now, all of us have to, one day, be judged on what we did in our time of service to our communities. And the question is going to be, did we make our ancestors proud? Did we fulfill our purpose? And what kind of legacy are we leaving behind? All of us on the Board, those of us who are leaders in the audience, will have to, one day, answer those questions. Did we leave the system that we were in charge of better, in a better condition than when we got it? And all of us have to answer that question to the best of our abilities. So I'd like to make a pledge, because I hear a lot about people saying in this community, it's about the kids, and it's so unfortunate for our parent group to feel the way they feel, but I can understand them. Let's first acknowledge some things. 87% of Local 566 are community members who live here, taxpayers, their children go to these schools. They're the peoples you see every day in your churches and your grocery stores and all of those. And I can tell you one thing, when we did our contracts, so it's not unions against parents, so women have a conversation with them, and I was actually having a conversation with them out in the hallway, we're not the ones who received anything. Like, when we went to contract negotiations, they told us zeros. So that's how they felt about the people who actually serve this community and live in this community, and their children go to these schools. But I didn't see any administrators take any sacrifices. And so I'd like, as union president of Local 566, especially with these after-school programs, to start a pledge right now. We have after-school programs and sporting events that don't get funded with supports from our custodians, who are there to do the work, and then asked, after they've been staff-reduced, to then support it in their regular shifts. So I want to make a pledge. My union is willing to pledge $3,000 to that fund to make sure that their students can be supporting those after-school programs with the proper supports that they deserve. $3,000 of union money. I'm willing to pledge, out of my paycheck, $2,000 to the same fund. I would like to see every administrator who tells us it's about kids first to give the same and match that pledge. Of course, most of them make over $150,000 a year, so let's see. Now, not every person is in that situation, but those who make this type of money, who stress that they are really about the children first. And why I say that? We had a youth, we have a youth work program, right? Where we take students, especially our students who are behaviorally challenged, and we try to get them to work with us in operations, doing the trades, custodial work, so we can keep them occupied, and we can address some of their financial issues in the summer so that they have some of the things that they need. But we have leaders of that department who've never even met any of the kids. I sent the Board pictures of what that youth group looks like, how, you saw how the smiles on their faces, and how rewarding it was for the staff to work with them. But you have a person and people who sit at the top of that department that make over $180,000 a year, that wouldn't even know one of the kids' names, not even one, four of which went through the program and are now employed by the City of Hartford, working in that department. This is the type of investment needed to be made, and this is the type of leadership. And I'm sorry, Superintendent, that many of your cabinet did not see it the way it should have been seen, because they failed on every level, and they continue to fail, and that's why we're asking for the influence of them not to go to the new people in place, because that influence has led to what? They got nothing done. If you asked me as a Board during any of my meetings with the teams, what collaborations did we make, other than the fact that we pointed out as a union that laws were being violated and our contract was being violated, so that had to be upheld, there were no collaborations. We even jokingly made that the position should be the chief operational obstructor, because nothing ever got done. And if it's really about kids first, now, I have a kid. Ask them, do they even know the name of my child who attends Hartford Public Schools? Or do they know the names of the children who were in the youth program who worked under their leadership? Did they take a picture with the kids? Did they have lunch with the children? Did they ever place that child first or those children first? Yes, they said cute little politically correct things about children are first, but the actions never stood up to that. So I'm asking any administrator who's really about children first, I will give the deputy some credit, he did show up to an invited thing, and he did meet some of the children, but he's new here. I'd ask any administrator that's sitting behind me, sitting in the audience, those who are at home, those who drive luxury cars, that do not live in Hartford, would you make a pledge to the children here? Are you willing, during the time of COVID up until now, did anybody take a sacrifice or pause in bonuses and pay increases? Did any supervisor or administrator say that they will be willing to give $1,000 back in their pay, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, pledge back to the children of this community for sports, for activities, for anything? I know if you guys were to do that research, you would find that answer to be no. They asked for more money, and what was the results? They gave us terrible results, but asked for more money, and we honored that. And the culture that was created was this management versus labor relationship, keeping us divided at all times. Even when the pieces of the management team, who I worked with for years, that we've encouraged to be in management, wanted to actually collaborate with the unions, they were called spies, but I thought we were on the same team. Spies because they want to do the right thing for our children, do the right thing for our communities, be the right influencers, but because they didn't want to kiss the ring, they were labeled spies in the educational workforce. We're talking about spying instead of teamwork. It saddens me to have to come up here and be, say what I have to say, because we should be, have moved past what we've gone through. But if we do not recognize the past, we'll be doomed to repeat it. Isn't that correct? I'm asking that the new CEO be given an opportunity to have more freedom to make decisions on his own, not the influence. Yes, we understand that some of the logistics he'd have to transition in power, and we understand that has to be explained to him, and we get that, but not the attitude, the climate and the culture. That stalling tactic, never answering anything, letting things stay the way they were. I even give you a perfect example, and then I'll be done. When they no longer could keep me quiet, I was faced with false accusations of, by people I'd never even worked with, supervisors I've never even worked with, don't even know. If I saw them, I couldn't tell you who they were, but they all, at the same time, gave false accusations and put me through a process. And this is while I was coming to the Board, I mean, coming to the leadership of that department, saying, hey, what's going on here? Things are not right here. We're being faced with racial discrimination, gender discrimination, all these kinds of things. And you know what we were told? I'm not here to clean up that mess. Maybe they were indoctrinated with that type of behavior, and I didn't want to make it about me, so I didn't bring it up then, because I wanted to make sure that we did the work. But this is an appropriate time to start saying and start really recognizing what was happening. Our ancestors did not fight and die and give their lives for people to assimilate to a system that kept us disenfranchised from the beginning. They didn't do that. So in many cases, many of the people sitting behind me have not made their ancestors proud, and that is our duty. That's not what they did this for. They did this so that every one of you sitting up at this table, as a Board and myself, could lead and usher the next generations into a brighter and better future. And that's what it should be about, not a paycheck, because at the end of the day, you take none of that with you. And it's unfortunate that we have to have these conversations in this type of form, but you know what? This is healthy for democracy. This is healthy that we have these type of discussions. It is healthy that we highlight this type of dysfunction. It is healthy that we hold people of all cultural backgrounds, including the ones that are similar to us, accountable for their bad actions or their inactions. I think this Board can head in the right direction. It's not us against you, you against us. Let's do away with that. Governor Lamont, if you're listening, and I know you are, Mayor Runan, if you're listening, and I know you are, you asked me in 2023, at a table at the baseball field for the Yard Goats, when we were doing staff in the front lines, what was the charge? What do we need? Well, same thing. We need to staff the front lines, support our students, help this Board make the decisions needed to usher this school district in the direction it should be going in. Nothing has changed, Governor Lamont and Mayor Runan, from that same charge that we spoke about in 2023. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your patience.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming out for public comment. Thank you for those at home who watched it and appreciate the democracy that we did see here tonight. We're going to head back up into our agenda tonight to the election of officers. While it feels like we just did this, because we did back in June, it is part of our bylaws that we do this every February, so we are going to do it tonight. And with that, the Board of Education conducts its annual organizational meeting every February. This is a process when officers are elected, and we use paper ballots for each office. The nominations will be made, the candidates' names will be listed on the ballot, and each member will sign the form. Again, this is for the bylaws that we currently have. Ms. Santiago will collect the paper ballots and will inform us of the results. After that, Ms. Mizurak, Assistant Corporation Counsel, will proceed with the oath of office. I'll start with Board Chairperson. I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Chairperson.
I nominate Jennifer Hockenhall for Board Chair.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. I accept. Are there any other nominations on the floor for the Chair of the Board of Education? All right, hearing none. I close the nominations for the Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. Moving on to the Board Vice Chair, I will now take nominations for the Office of Board Vice Chair.
I nominate Franz Wasdarestel Ledger.
Thank you. Ms. Daristel Ledger, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Board? All right. Hearing none, I close the nominations for Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. I will now take nominations for the Office of the Board of Second Vice Chair.
I nominate Tyrone Walker for Second Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And Tyrone, or sorry, Mr. Walker, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
All right. Any other nominations on the floor for the Office of Second Vice Chair? Hearing none, I close the nominations for Second Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. All right, and last but not least, I will now take nominations for the Office of the Board Secretary.
I nominate Corey Mills for Secretary of the Board of Ed.
I second.
Thank you. Mr. Mills? Thank you. Any additional nominations? All right, hearing none. All right, hearing done, I now close the nominations for the Secretary of the Board. Please cast your votes.
And continues to be Ms. Jennifer Hockenhall. The Vice Chairman, Mr. Tyrone, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Francois Derris de Leger, Second Vice Chair Tyrone Walker, and Secretary Corey Mills. And Ms. Attorney Lori Mizurek will now give you your oath of office.
All right. We will now move on to the report of the Chair. And thank you, Lori. First up is the leadership transition. On January 26th, as we know, Dr. Torres Rodriguez notified the Board of Education of her resignation as the Superintendent and CEO of Hartford Public Schools. It is with a heavy heart that we accepted this resignation. We are grateful for all Dr. Torres Rodriguez has done for the students and our Hartford community and look forward to continuing our work together through summer of 2025. The Board is planning to hire a search firm to assist with the transition. We are working to secure outside funding for this process and plan to retain a firm in the coming weeks. As this is an incredibly important process, we look forward to the expertise and guidance that a search firm will bring to the process. The Board plans to engage the community at the start of the process to gather feedback as we search for the next leader of Hartford Public Schools. The Board will serve as a search committee. We will then engage the community towards the end of the process through forums and/or other events to ensure the community continues to have a voice. We will continue to keep the community updated on the process as it moves along. The Board respectfully requests that interested applicants not reach out directly to any member of the Board. The Board will be using a search firm in order to keep the recruiting process unbiased and professional. Once the application process has started, the community will be notified via the website, social media posts, Parents Square, and other media outlets. The goal is this process begins no later than early March 2025. Tonight, the Board will vote on the strategic priorities and objectives. Upon the passage of the strategic priority and objectives, the district will begin to create roadmaps to achieve the priorities. These priorities were created with the community. Dr. Torres Rodriguez will present on this topic in more detail tonight. I wanted to thank each and every person who took time to provide feedback over the last six months, which helped shape the plan that we have to vote on tonight. The Board will continue to work with the administration on how progress is being made towards the priorities and how that progress is shared with the community. And we will share that with you in the coming months. In the meantime, should you wish to further discuss the plan and stay involved in the process, please consider joining us at our next Board Community Gathering that will take place before the Community Budget Forum at MLK School on Monday, February 24th at 5:00 p.m. We look forward to continuing to work together on this process. The Board convened a Legislative and Advocacy Task Force, which holds meetings via Zoom and are livestreamed and recorded. The task force is learning about the ongoing legislative session, legislative and advocacy goals of other agencies supporting education throughout the state and the district's schools. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 5th at 5:00 p.m. We look forward to working towards the collective goal of advocating for the students at Hartford Public Schools. There is currently significant interest at the state level around special education. Discussions around funding and pilot programs are the most significant current topics. If you wish to become more involved in this process, please reach out to Ms. Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. The Blue Ribbon Commission Report was finalized today and will be available to the public tomorrow, Wednesday, February 19th. I encourage those of you who are interested in learning more to visit the website hartfordbluerybden.com, where you can find past meeting recordings and meeting materials, and I assume the plan as it will be posted tomorrow. This month, all the committees met. The Teaching and Learning Committee discussed the Hartford Principals Leadership Academy, Principal Pipeline Development Program, and Program of Studies Revision. The Policy Committee discussed the PETS in the Classroom Policy, the Code of Ethics and Harassment Policy, the School Naming Policy, Title IX Policy Revisions, Expanded Criteria for School Honors, and the Hartford Teacher Advisory Committee Proposal. Family and Community Engagement Committee discussed the Strategic Plan, School Construction Updates, Extended School Hours and After-School Enrichment Programs, the University of Hartford Evaluator Contract, the Two-Year School District Calendar, and the School Governance Council and Welcome Center Reports. And last, the Finance Committee discussed the updated 2025 budget deficit and the 2026 budget. I would encourage anyone wishing to learn more about any of these topics to please go to Board Docs through tonight's agenda, and you can watch the recording, read the minutes, see the agendas. This month, Board members visited Burns Latino Studies Academy for an informal visit and attended the Educators for Excellence event related to the Strategic Plan. The Board also participated in a Board Retreat where we discussed the 2025-2026 budget challenges and the strategic plan. As a reminder, you can find the Superintendent Report, all committee reports, student reports, all attachments and videos in today's meeting agenda on Board Docs. All committee workshops, all committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. And if you have any questions or feedback, again, please contact Ms. Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Have high-level update. One is regarding to the fact that we know that families remain concerned about changes in federal immigration enforcement policies and how they may impact our schools. I know we have sent communications home, but I thought it would be appropriate to reiterate our commitment. And so please be assured that at Hartford Public Schools, we remain firmly committed to protecting our students' right to education, regardless of immigration status. Our district is not required to collect immigration status information from students or their family or caregivers. And we've taken necessary steps to ensure that Immigration and Custom Enforcement ICE agents follow proper legal procedures if they seek to access any of our school campuses to provide clear guidance and reassurance to our school communities. We've issued multiple communications. District Communication was sent to staff in January. Training happened with our school leaders, actually in December, and again in January. Comprehensive, frequently asked question documents were distributed to staff and families, a video explaining the protocol also shared with staff and families. And most recently, district leaders did meet with ICE representatives to foster communication and shared understanding. So we continue to monitor any changes and remain, again, committed to making sure that we are maintaining a safe and inclusive and supportive learning environment to all students. We do not want to cause additional concern, but we're managing that with validating that there is concern and fear. And so we all remain vigilant and committed to working together with our families and our students and our staff. Shifting gears to update on strategic plan, I'm sorry, on transition planning. I know that I will continue to do my day-to-day duties, but with a specific focus on budget and strategic operating plan. I'll talk a little bit about the budget in a minute. And focusing on addressing the State Department of Education inquiries and implementing those recommendations whenever they are released. We anticipate some recommendations to be released in March, April, and May. And so I will make sure that either we embed those into the strategic plan and the implementation work and keep you all updated. Also focusing on management and leadership capacity at Central Office in advance of the strategic plan and relative to the recommendations from the State Department of Education, we are mindful of any leadership capacity building that has to happen at the Central Office. And so we'll be focusing on those. And also a focus on a cradle-to-career vision and foundational structures. And that is making sure that every student has support and opportunities that they need from early childhood through graduation and beyond. So this includes reinforcing partnerships within Hartford Public Schools and externally. Requires cross-sector partnerships. And so the goal with your support and approval is to establish a design and a foundation for that work and ideally have the first convening before the end of the school year. This is to engage other stakeholders, not just in the work, but potentially in identifying additional resources and supports for Hartford Public Schools as well. And lastly, focusing on supporting the onboarding of the Superintendent. I believe a thoughtful and structured transition is essential to maintain not only stability and momentum. And so I just want to make sure that you all know that I remain committed to working with you all as a board, district leadership, and our partners to ensure a smooth transition. And Ms. Santiago, if you don't mind projecting, oh, did we lose Ms. Oh, she's in the back. I just want to do a quick touch point on where we are with the budget, given that many conversations are going to begin, SGCs tomorrow, and followed by next week, a community forum on the budget. And if we go to the next slide, please. We are anticipating ending the current fiscal year with a deficit of anywhere from $4 to $6 million, which was reduced significantly. This is driven by unrealized revenue assumptions and unanticipated additions to the budget. Example, we anticipated we would be able to use all of the pandemic relief funding and the non-lapsing fund in this fiscal year, but these funds were used in the previous fiscal year. One of the largest unanticipated increases is in tuition specifically for special education. Note that this increase is not driven by additional students enrolling in programs outside of the district, but it is increases to the tuition costs for each student. Utilities is another area outside of our control, if you will, that is projected to be higher than anticipated. And there are also some increases for deliberate moves we've made to attract teachers and paraeducators, right? Like including our signing bonuses. So we believe a large deal of the increased expenses and unrealized revenue will be accounted for by increasing our vacancy savings. It's not ideal, but it is an opportunity that we have. And so we've seen movement on paraprofessional vacancies since last semester, right? We know that we've worked together to have some flexibilities in that. And so we're hoping that with the new contracts and salary raises for next year, that vacancy numbers will be lower. And we are receiving more revenue than anticipated in the Magnet Operating and Excess Cost Grant, which is helping make up for the unrealized revenue assumptions. And then, right, so that means that the deficit will be around $4 to $6 million. If we go to the next slide, please. Our fiscal year 2026 budget, we are in the midst of that now. It does present both challenges and opportunities, right? The revenue is projected to increase by 2.1 largely, 2.1% largely due to the final phase of, the additional state education cost share funding. The expenses are also expected to go up by 4.9%. So, right, there's a discrepancy between those two numbers. The key cost drivers include increases in salary from our contracts, right, contractual obligations, rising special education and transportation costs, and inflation. As a result, we are projecting a $30 million deficit, even with a flat service budget that maintains the current programming and staffing levels that we have today. This gap underscores the importance of strategic investments and continued collaboration, not only with state, but our city leaders to sustain essential services for our students. We know, in the next slide, we know that Hartford Public Schools has had persistent structural deficit driven by flat revenue, rising costs driven by choice in special education system, right? Tuition, transportation, salary increases, and inflation. And due to this, right, we actually have had to mitigate close to $170 million in 530 positions in the last 10 years in order to pass balanced budgets. And so, lastly, our next steps, we're engaging in external advocacy at the state and city level to increase our revenue, including testifying at the legislative hearings that are tomorrow and the ones to come in the future. Our focus is on, as our chairperson said, funding for special education. Internally, we have an obligation, as you all know, to pass a balanced budget. And we will be releasing draft budgets to school and to our district-level teams this week and anticipate potential reductions. Schools will see a reduction in projected staffing levels, which is largely due to more accurate enrollment projections and partly due to changes in the staffing formula. This change, this changes amount to approximately $5 million of the $30 million that we need to solve for. So there are also certain roles that are on hold as we continue to get community input and continue conversations with you all as a board about potential reductions. Central Office teams will also be planning around potential reductions. While I know that this is a challenge, it does present an opportunity to align the limited resources very, very closely as much as possible to the strategic plan and the investment that we know will matter most to students. And so to the community, I do invite you to participate in the budget development process and provide input on what resources are most important to sustain. Again, we will be having a Community Budget Forum next Monday from 5:00 to 6:30 at Marlothi King Middle School, where you can provide input on next steps for the budget. And we look forward to our continued collaboration with you all as a board and with our community. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Superintendent. Unfortunately, this month's Student Advisory Council was canceled due to weather, so there's no report from them this month. However, they are here and ready to engage. Ms. Kiara Hill, who is the Vice President of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, and our student representative to the Board is here with us. Would you like to say anything? You can say now.
It's okay. I just wanted to introduce myself again. My name is Kiara Hill. I'm a junior at Classical Magnet. I'm 17 years old. I've been on the Superintendent's Council for three years, so all my time in high school. And I'm really excited to be here and happy to help.
Thank you for being here. All right. We will now move on to the business agenda. Item 6.1, Hartford Public Schools 2025 to 2028 Strategic Plan. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education accept the Superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2025 to 2028 Hartford Public Schools Strategic Plan as presented, recognizing the comprehensive and inclusive process that guided its development. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I will pass it back to Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chairperson Hockenhall. I'm here to present the Strategic Plan for 2025 through 2028. Before I begin, I want to thank you all for your continued participation in the development and the refinement of this plan. We've learned a great deal from our interactions, and I think this plan is stronger, the strongest for it. And also thanks as well to our community who participated, whether it was through a survey or two surveys, whether you joined at one of our events, whether you participated in a focus group, whether you were as part of our Superintendent's Student Advisory Council engaging with the work and the design. Your voices are certainly helping shape the future of Hartford Public Schools. Next slide. As you know, we've spent the last several months revising and refining strategic priorities, objectives, and actions, objectives, and actions, and starting to map out high-level and more detailed actions for the next three years. So today, we'll give you an overview before you consider the vote. The District Model for Excellence and its associated Bridge Year Plan have been instrumental over the past four years in helping steer the district, not only through a pandemic, but towards continued evolution in services to students and families and educators. I am proud of the work that we've made, and to create our earlier plans, we've engaged members of the communities, which led us to the most recent focus on high-quality teaching and learning, student connection to school, and a future in which we are financially resilient. As a result of the focus and due to the strength of our communally-developed plan, we, I think we've seen many gains, including growth in math proficiency, reduction in chronic absenteeism, a record high four-year graduation rate, including for some of our, some of our groups like special education and multilingual learners. And then, as we go into the next slide and we think about setting out the plan for the next three years, it was a similar process, seeking input and feedback from community members in order to craft a strong plan and vision for the years ahead. And in partnership with Columbia University's Center for Public Research and Leadership, I believe they're here in the back, we conducted a full-scale process and engaged members in the community, Hartford Public School community, in sharing their thoughts and perspectives on the next strategic plan. Relative to the reach, launching in fall of 2024 with postings on social media, press releases, emails to community partners, principals, assistant principals, faith-based partners, posters in every school, sent out messages. I am told that our, well, our goal was to reach, reach out to as many people as possible that were invested in Hartford Public Schools, whether they had children or not in Hartford Public Schools, and through that effort, the outreach went to over 21,000 members of our community with deeper engagement from several thousand. Relative to the surveys, if you, some of you might recall that since September, we've had an opportunity for people to share their perspectives via the survey. Strategic planning process included actually two surveys. One running from September to November, that was our Phase 1, and then running from December to February, which was Phase 2. Phase 1 was, included three very open-ended questions to gauge community members' thoughts and ideas about the future. And then Phase 2 asked respondents to organize draft strategic priorities emerging from what we heard during that first phase in order of their relative importance. And so to date, we've received over 2,900 survey responses. There were also focus groups, different community groups through small group conversations, in-person virtual events, including the State of the District, Professional Development Day, quarterly union leadership meetings, Phase 1 groups, asked, we asked specific open-ended questions, and several of you were part of those meetings and groups, and then one-to-one conversations. There were about 20 to 30 minutes of one-to-one conversations, over 32 of those happened, with community members, teachers, board members, council members. So lots of opportunity for engagement, and now let's see what, as we look closer into what we've, what we heard. In addition to being grounded in community input, the strategic plan aligns with the district overall mission and vision, providing students with learning and support that they need to be successful, not only in school but in life, ensuring that our graduates are prepared to transform their world, and in doing so will involve focus, follow-through, and commitment to a strategic approach that focuses on targets and resources for maximum impact. Across all members of the community, there was a very clear desire to engage in frank and authentic conversations about how to bring this mission and vision to life, to make sure that all students were provided the learning and the support needed, while also being honest and realistic about the challenges and opportunities facing the district. This approach emerged from those perspectives and from examples of other districts that have found themselves facing similar financial and enrollment contexts. In these scenarios, it became really important to make sure the focus is on operating at a level that is right-sized for, for our community, families, and students. Instead of doing much, much more of than is possible to sustain at high levels of quality, it is important to have the right footprint to serve all students. The approach here is to target resources, financial and other resources, in order to provide services to all students in the best way possible. And so in terms of taking a closer look at the priorities that emerged, these priorities were developed by analyzing key ideas and topics that came up repeatedly across conversations and feedback over the two phases that I referenced, creating these high-level buckets to capture the central ideas voiced by our community, and bringing in the ideas from research and other systems across the nation. The first strategic priority, whole and healthy students, about really nurturing the whole student, their academic, personal, mental, social, physical selves, not only in school but also outside of school. So you can think of this first strategic priority as the anchor, the cornerstone in the arch, if you will, or the center of the wheel. All of the others are in service and connect to this one. Some strategic objectives focus on mental health, high-quality instruction, strong pathways for students from early childhood to college and career, targeted focus for students that have the most needs, including students with disabilities and multilingual learners, as well as opportunities to pilot innovation. The second priority, expansive learning and opportunity, that one relates to engaging in these genuine partnerships with the Hartford community to provide students with real-world and enriching experiences to generate more trusting collaborative relationships. And the strategic objectives include the open, transparent, and accessible communication, continuing to foster trust and collaboration, offering those engaging, real-world experiences and enrichment for all students. The third priority, skilled and diverse teams, focuses on keeping talented people in Hartford to the benefit of our students, whether through strengthening our recruitment pipelines, increasing compensations, greater differentiation in professional learning and support. And the strategic objectives relate to honoring the varying experiences and interests of educators, just like we're trying to honor the needs of our students, honoring the interests and experiences of educators by providing professional, professional learning that is differentiated, and increasing compensation to attract and retain our educators and improving our hiring processes. And finally, the fourth theme, operational efficiency, relates to using the resources that are available in the most effective way to provide high-quality services for our students. Some strategic objectives for this theme include managing our resources more equitably and strategically, and engaging in legislative advocacy, not only for policy changes but also for increased funding, improving management at all levels of the system, and delivering on the commitment in the strategic plan. That was actually something that was very resonating, that our community internally and externally wants to know how the implementation of the plan is progressing over the years. So I want to thank again everyone in our community for participating, and specifically you all, board members, for your deep level of engagement from the onset in, in development of the process and your engagement throughout, not only in the process but with our community. This plan is important for ensuring the hard work that continues in Hartford Public Schools as, right, you enter a new chapter with a new leader. It has the fingerprints of our members of our community, and it will be critical, right, for sustaining voices, ideas, and passions for the improvement of the district. And so we will continue to engage community, and again, plugging the Community Budget Forum next Monday. Again, now I will turn it over to you, board. Chair, Chairperson Hockenhall.
Thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Any questions or discussion from the board? Yeah, Ms. Brody?
Thank you. I don't know what part of, it could have been in her earlier, her superintendent's report, but when the budget books come out, and I know they usually always do, but I just want to ensure, ensure that when we list the school by school, that we get good data on last year and then what's proposed.
Clarifying question, relative to enrollment and, and staffing?
Staff, staffing enrollment, because I think that, that has always been helpful for me. I found a, I was throwing out some things this weekend, but I found a, I think a 2011, 2012 that I got, like the, and to the parents that spoke tonight, way back when, we valued parents, we valued them, I was like one of those parents. And we had the opportunity to get that book, to know what was going on, and to be a part of the process, to have a seat at the table. I can't even express how important that is. But one of the things that was helpful to parents then, and has been helpful to me as a board member now, is that I know what I'm comparing it to. If it went from a half-staff to a full-staff in a certain, like, in a certain area, that comparison helps, the overall information helps, but definitely that comparison, because it helps us when we're engaging community and they're saying, they, we had this and they're proposing that. Knowing what it was and being able to speak to that, instead of just, like, no base to start from, is helpful to us as board members, as well as I'm sure is helpful to the community.
That can be done. I think it's already baked in the design of the, yes.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2025-2028 Hartford Public Schools Strategic Plan as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Thank you, Superintendent, for all of your hard work on the strategic plan and to the, everyone in the audience today, I know your fingerprints are on it, and to everyone who participated in this progress, process, it's been very, very helpful. All right. Item 6.2, Contract Approval Extended School Grant Contracts. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the extended school hours providers, Catholic Charities, and The Village for family and children, and for the amounts listed for the term outlined in the contracts ending June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right. Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
For a little bit of background, the State Department of Education makes funds available to Alliance and Priority School Districts, which we are one of them, to provide extended school hours for academic enrichment, support, and recreation programs during non-school hours. And so Hartford Public Schools is requesting proposals that implement a balanced approach to after-school programming, combining academic support, social, cultural, and recreational enrichment. We do envision a system of after-school programs that are coordinated and aligned with the instructional programs offered during the regular day of our students. And so these combined experiences will provide our students with supportive developmental opportunities and will help them broaden, broaden their skills. And so all the 2024-2025 extended-day programs are expected to develop and operate, to be developed and operated by CBOs, community-based organizations, in collaboration with each, with each school's principal and other essential personnel. The goals of the Extended School Hours program are as follows. Improving the quality of the after-school programs in ways that are consistent with the principles of best educational and positive youth development practice. Increasing participation and engagement of our students in quality extended school-day programs. Strengthening the partnerships between Hartford Public Schools and our CBOs that are providing this quality extended school-day programs. Encouraging support and parental involvement, and using our parents as advisors and volunteers in the Extended School Hours program. And lastly, building the capacity of Hartford Public Schools and our CBOs to plan, deliver, and assess quality extended-day programming. And so we have in the amount of $132,000 involving two of our key partners, Catholic Charities and The Village for Children and Families. And if we have any questions, Ms. Janel Hooker is here.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? No?
More of a general question. I know we've voted before to allocate funds to both The Village and Catholic Charities. Why is this one separate from the other vote? Why, why are they, why do we vote on them at different times?
The one, the one that we voted on before was the Community Schools Grant, which is a separate funding, and this one is specific to extend, extended school hours, which come from the state, and is specific to providing enrichment opportunities for our students during our school year. So there were two different funding sources that came at two different, separate times, and that's the reason why we had to do the, kind of the allocation or bringing it to the board at different times.
Thank you.
Chair. The, more of a comment than a question, but I know in the, in the past, there's been questions about the scope of services and the number of students actually served on a, I guess, month-on-month basis. I would like to be able to, for us to receive that and, and have that tracked. I'm sure it's reported out, but I would like to just have that as part of the deliverables of the approved program. The second piece, kind of following what, remember, about the previous contract. Can I also get a scorecard of all the programs? Because it seems like across the different schools, several programs have a number of schools and other providers have others, and somehow it would be helpful to be able to get like a larger view that shows the scope of all the schools served. And I'm thinking to me, kind of what was said by Board Member Brody, that at times, I want to be able to, be able to tell folks, yeah, your school's served, here's how they served. And I often don't have that at my disposal, and so I'm kind of left to, you know, not be as knowledgeable as I can be in that area. Just more comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. You are currently working on that, if I may.
I was gonna say, perhaps in a family and community engagement committee, it could be more than, more than a page, like an actual
Right.
... overview of programming and partnerships.
Yeah, I didn't mean to make it sound like it's just been a page. No, it can, it can.
More in-depth. Hold it.
Ms. Brody?
So I read that it said Priority Schools. So is there a list of, or did I miss the names of the schools?
That were a part of this? So we did get a total of eight different organizations that applied for 11 of the The different organization, no, the different schools that organizations applied for were MD Fox, MLK, Weber, Burr, McDonough, Milner, Parkville, Buckley High, ESS. Weaver, Burr, McDonough, Milner, Parkville, Buckley High, ESM, Breakthrough South, uh Rossin, and Sand. That was the total list of schools that got CBOs or community-based organizations that submitted a proposal for those priority schools.
So for this, these funds, what schools are they servicing?
So for these particular uh organizations that we brought here tonight, Catholic Charities is looking for services at McDonough, Milner, and Parkville. And the Village is looking to provide services at Burr, Sand, and Rossin.
Last question. So for the schools, I don't even, based on, I'm a little bit more confused before I had my question because, so there was an opportunity for priority, meant, we have many priority schools, correct? So some of them did not um get this funding. Because you said many applied.
This was put out as a, a request for proposal through the city. Um the request for proposal went out and the proposal had the list of schools that everyone could apply for. The list of organizations that submitted an application were eight um organizations in total. And the schools that were, the ones that community-based organizations submitted a proposal were the ones that I listed. So we did have some schools that did not get a proposal from a community-based organization.
But even the ones we did receive proposals for, they just are, they just will not benefit from this funding?
No. So out of the different schools that I listed, we will have organizations providing services there. The reason it's not being brought up here today is because the amount of the contract is below how much we bring to the Board. The reason these organizations are coming is because they're applying for multiple schools, which amount to the total that we need to bring to the Board for consideration.
Okay, so all the priority schools you listed will receive funding. Um, I get it now. Thank you.
That's correct.
Through the chair, um Ms. Hooker, I'm, I am glad that you've said that because it answered the question of why I don't see certain things. So, so on that reporting, even for those programs that I guess are below the 50K threshold, yes, still include them because it it adds visibility to who's being served. Um and it answers the questions to why some schools somehow seem like they're being missed.
Yep.
So thank you.
That will be a part of the report.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question. Um I'm curious about the amounts being funded. Is it on a per pupil basis or per school basis, or simply what the organizations are applying and requesting?
So the request for proposal that went out was up to $25,000 per school that were being requested. So for the organizations that we brought here today, because of the three schools, that's the reason why they're here. So it was up to 25,000, and we wanted to make sure that we had funding to go to all the schools that received a proposal.
Okay, so to be clear, a school with 300 students would be getting the same up to 25,000 as a school with 100 students?
So the extended school hours is a smaller bucket of money um that we receive through the state, which will not be a bucket of money that could provide services to the entire school, which is why the proposal is for our community-based organizations to work with our principals to be able to um identify students that would benefit from the service based on the amount of funding allowed and based on the period of time and the type of services that they're bringing to the school.
Thank you so much. Um I have a question. Since the providers are here, can we just possibly hear about some of the services that they are going to be offering to each school?
Absolutely.
Hello, Board. So in the prospects of time, how long would you like me to tell you about all the things that we do?
Just a quick three minutes.
Just a quick three minutes. Can you put the dingler on for me, please? Um so at, with Catholic Charities, we provide a core four service. And so those four services at the foundation is the after-school program, which primarily a lot of times people think of when they talk about community schools. We also provide intensive case management, both for families and for scholars. To focus on chronic absenteeism is at our forefront. We also provide food pantry services. And we also provide clinical support services in the form of evidence-based model treatment before, during, and after school, as well as social-emotional learning services. We partner with volunteers who come in and volunteer in various capacities, providing reading literacy and things of that nature. So I'll just pause there, but there's a lot more that we do and 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 the Village does as well.
Good evening, Board. When we're looking at the array of services provided, um a couple of things I wanted to say just to keep proper context. Over the past couple of years, I mean, I think um the Board has voted and you are well aware that the community schools initiatives throughout the schools um in Hartford have been cut about 40%. To that end, there's also funding that we receive that we bring and braid together has also been cut. So as we're looking at these services, we have to have difficult conversations with the school principals because they are very clear about the types of services they receive and what they want to continue. They were also clear about this sort of augmentation that they wanted, and we weren't able to do that for a variety of reasons, most of which you're aware of. So as we look to approaching these um extended school hours grant, it was an opportunity to layer back in some of those pieces that got erased. It was also an opportunity to employ um teachers. One of the pieces that we try our best to do wherever possible is to create a seamless alignment. When you have a child during the school day, that child may present very differently in an extended-day school and extended set- setting. So when that occurs, our preference is that those teachers are there um receiving that because not only is it beneficial to see, it also gives a perspective and an understanding that the student may not have an opportunity to see of their teachers. Teachers in an extended-day environment have a little more latitude, a little more opportunity because the ratios shrink. And when those ratios shrink and the intensiveness of the academic piece sort of disappears and falls by the wayside because what we practice is disguised learning, so we are teaching you the same thing. It's in a very different way. It feels more like, you know, edutainment, right? So what extended school hours does, especially because of the timeline, when we look at implementation, implementation happens January till June. You're not hiring staff externally for that. You're hiring subcontractors. You're hiring teachers to give you an opportunity to be creative. The reality of that funding, it is limited, however, it does give us a chance to better intertwine with the school, do more creative activities because now we've had six months roughly to process and to experience the school and see what works and what doesn't. And when we write these pieces, they are specific and individualized to each school because we meet with the principals, we meet with lead teachers, we have conversations with whomever we can to then write something creative that meets the needs of the school. So at face value, you have the three categories. You know, homework help, academic support, and enrichment activities. Everything sort of falls within that. The creativity in it is very different, and because it's a specific thing for sort of a smaller timeline, it does allow us to do more, the more expensive things, like STEM. If we're looking at doing STEM year-round, it ain't gonna happen. We just can't afford it. But when we're looking at using ESA stylists, we're able to provide that STEM activity which every single principal said they wanted, but it's cost prohibitive. But with these sort of activities, it allows us to be a little more creative. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I, I, you know, and talking about augmentation, the other thing um for our children in our schools is the exposure. Um and so these funds allow us to take field trips, right? To go various places, to museums and things of that nature. It's not a lot, but one or two field trips can really go a long way, particularly when you're talking about teaching STEM and then then them seeing it operationalized, for example, at the Science Center.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Um the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the extended school hours providers, Catholic Charities, and the Village for Family and Children for the amounts listed for the term outlined in the contracts ending June 30th, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. Item 6.3, Second Reading and Adoption: Live Animals in the Classroom. Uh, the motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopt policy 6163.3, Live Animals in the Classroom. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Um with that, I will throw it to Board Member Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um this is proposed um for two reasons. One, because schools were asking for it, um because we didn't have a policy on live animals in classrooms prior to this. And this was discussed twice during our policy committee meetings. We've revised the language, and what is being presented today is the final language. It addresses the policy on when animals can be in the classroom, how to deal with allergies, and also the accommodations that we can make so that it's safe for everyone when there are animals in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Um any questions or discussion? Yep. Ms. Derr Staliger.
So I just want to, just briefly talk about, just briefly, about the importance of animals in the classroom as a, as an educator, as a Montessori teacher, as a parent. Um animals have been, and instead of saying animals, pets, class pets, um have been a great responsibility for teachers, for students, and it's actually in Montessori, part of the curriculum where children learn responsibility. They learn how to take care of each other. They learn how to take, they learn kindness. They learn compassion. They learn cooperation. And so it's, it's a beautiful thing to have some animals, some pets, whether it's a fish, whether it's a guinea pig or something like that, or a bunny. But it's, it's really a beautiful thing, and it's nice when the community, um the classroom community engages. And it's, it can be very exciting when students have, it's their turn to take the pet home. But I do see how this can be necessary because, you know, to have some type of parameters and, you know, what should be, what's safe, what isn't safe. So I'm glad that this is coming about.
Thank you. Ms. Brody?
Don't take, to, to anybody in the listening audience, don't take the, the, the animal home. It may never leave your home. I was a Montessori mom for, from pre-K3 to eighth grade. Now I have a ninth grader. We have a bunny named Sinead that was in Mr. Alexander's class that now lives at home with us. So it's a possibility that it will not leave your home.
Thank you for the cautionary tale. Any other discussion, questions?
Ms. Brody, did you strike the line about not allowing parents to bring them? No.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt policy 6163.3, Live Animals in the Classroom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Um just so the viewing audience and those here know, um typically we don't really read through anything here, but um after some discussion with the Board, I'm going to go ahead and read the consent agenda items and then give a short synopsis as to what we're voting on. Um as a reminder, we do talk about all these things in committee meetings and all those things, so you can still go online and read more, but this is just to make sure that everyone is aware of what we are voting on. So we are just going to do one vote, but I will read through everything. So 7.2, Approval of Plans and EDO 42 Submittal Phase Two for the Fred Wish, Fred D. Wish Museum School. Uh there, sorry. Uh, these are the Phase Two Construction Plans. The State Department of Administrative Services Office of Grants Management requires that the school building committees and Board of Education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for the school construction progress prior to OGA review of the plans. Once the plans are reviewed and approved by OGA, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. This item was reviewed in the Family and Community Engagement Committee and at the Hartford School Building Committee. And that meeting actually happened today. If anybody's interested in going online and looking at the plans, it is on YouTube. 7.3, Contract Amendment Approval, University of Hartford, Third-Party Evaluator. This item was also discussed at the Family and Community Engagement Committee, the U.S. Department of Education. Full-service community school grant requires grantees have a third-party evaluator as part of the implementation of the grant, and the Center for Social Research Team at the University of Hartford have together over 25 years of cumulative experience in conducting applied social research. 7.4 to 7.8 are first readings of policies. First one is harassment. This policy updated the definition of harassment that reflects a more accurate description of what harassing behavior means. The current definition seems to confuse nondiscrimination with harassment. Harassing behavior does not have to be based on a protected class such as race, gender, national origin, et cetera, to be considered harassment. We do have a separate nondiscrimination policy that addresses discriminatory behavior. Code of Ethics, CAE audit flagged it was a missing policy, and the HPS employees follow the city's code of ethics. This policy simply reflects that. Naming of Facilities or Parts of Facilities. Changes being made to this policy include that the person does not have to be deceased in order to qualify and expanding other requirements. And the 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 district calendar, this is the first reading of the proposed calendar that includes stakeholder feedback. All of the policies and the calendar above were discussed at the policy committee meetings and will be discussed again before moving forward to second reading at next month's meeting. And 7.9 is approval of the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Yep. Ms. Derr Staliger?
It, just to be clear, um you said January 1st, 2025. It's January 21st, 2025 for the approval of minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Fortune?
On the academic calendar, uh is there Superintendent or someone in the Central Office Team who can explain a bit more about the academic calendar? I think, I, I know this wasn't brought up during the policy committee. I'm not sure which committee looked at it, but just curious as to how we came with, kind of came to it. It looks like there's still some half-days or early release days, so I, I'm curious about all of that, given that we will have a shortened day that's 30 minutes shorter. Um, so.
We can have both Dr. Ratley and Chief of Schools Barney.
Good evening. In reference to the process and this being the first reading, the second um presentation will go before the Teaching and Learning Committee. Meanwhile, we've been collecting feedback from various stakeholders internally as well as externally, meaning parents and so forth on the calendar. That feedback will be um coded in a way that we can incorporate what needs to be incorporated and then bring the final version to that Teaching and Learning Committee at the next committee meeting to bring a more finalized draft. Did you want to add anything about the process?
And, and also speak to where we currently are in those conversations relative to the half-days?
Yes. So um in speaking to the process, it was a committee of all stakeholders, parents, teachers, uh school administrators, central office. Um and we met over the course of three meetings, uh the first being where everyone put their, their different stakeholder hat on um so that they were coming into it, looking at from all the different lenses, looking at the traditions that we had currently had within our calendars, preferences that we might all want to have from that stakeholder lens, and then also the laws that we need to abide by surrounding that. The second meeting was really around um then looking at um each of what we had identified as a stakeholder group and ranking those uh in order of importance or need. as a stakeholder group and ranking those in order of importance or need. So again, ranking traditions, preferences, and we have to adhere to the laws, so that just went in there. And then the final meeting was where we came to consensus. Where we currently are now is we have, as Dr. Ratley said, asked for feedback from various stakeholder groups. But the half-days was a consensus item, so we actually had had two separate versions of the calendars. The team then, when they had looked at the various versions during our consensus protocol, felt that based off of the different stakeholders, reducing the amount of half-days, including more full-days, and being strategic where the half-days went, supported all stakeholder groups, from parents to students to teachers.
Thank you. So am I reading this properly, that the first week of school, the last, the last month of, the last week of August, which is the first week of school, it's only half-days or four days, four consecutive days?
Yes. So yes, the team wanted to do a slow start, so we still have the transition day in, that was where the kindergarten, sixth grade and eighth grade, sorry, ninth grade, comes in to do community building. But feedback that we heard from all stakeholder groups was that everyone would benefit from a slower start to prep, to build culture and climate, to get used to school routines. And so that's where the team came to consensus that with the slow start.
Additionally, there's professional learning that happens at the beginning of the year, and also just allowing teachers time to set up classrooms, to have a chance to meet families and so forth, that's incorporated with the slow start. And so that's the reason why it looks like an extended runway to start the school year.
Who was part of the team?
So there was a cross-functional team that included several internal staff members, ranging from Teaching and Learning, Office of Schools, Chief Barney actually facilitated all of the sessions, our operations team members, members from transportation, as well as there was parent representation, union leadership representation as well.
Who were the parent representation groups?
There was a parent who agreed to participate through our Family and Community Engagement Office, and I can get her name to you.
So one parent?
There was one parent and one representative from each of those departments as well. So there were about 12 people in the presentation that we could share later, we could absolutely outline exactly who those people were.
But one parent altogether agreed to this first week of just half-days?
So it was a.
In the team?
It was more about building consensus, and then that's not where we stop. So in addition to the process, we actually get feedback from individuals. Every parent will receive the survey in order to weigh in on what their preferences are, as will the rest of stakeholders. We're going to community partners and other internal staff. So we are midway through the process, but those other stakeholder voices will be taken into account as we bring forth a final or more final draft to the board for consideration.
Okay, thank you. I mean, from, I think, given that we are shortening the school day and we negotiated in good faith with the union, the teachers' union in particular, I mean, one request that I would have is that we strongly try to eliminate these half-days because they are very disruptive. And I think the data also shows on half-days that attendance is down. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but that's my understanding. Because it is harder to swing work, family needs, and then having to pick up your child in four hours after dropping them off. So I think, especially given that we have shorter school days, it would be really important for me to, at least for the district, to try to eliminate half-days altogether, except perhaps on, say, the Friday before a one-week recess for winter break, or for like the holiday recess or something to that effect. But a first full week of school, that's a half-day after months of summer vacation and summer camps? I, as a parent, I can tell you, that's just, that just makes my life harder. So I, I, I'm, I'd be curious to hear what other parents are in support of this, because it just doesn't strike me as something that's family-friendly or parent-friendly, because it just makes it more difficult to support your child. And then my final question is just about how are we allocating that 30-minute difference? Are we shortening the, you know, push, half, splitting the difference between beginning and end, or any thoughts there?
That's continued work with the same calendar committee that was established. Now our operations team will take over to go through the process of determining exactly how that will be worked out, and so.
And parent voice weighing in through the survey as well on that, on that piece.
Thank you.
Ms. Brody?
Yeah, so we, as a board, had made it a priority with our transition grades. So I'm trying to figure out how do we land with not having that? Like you're, you're transitioning to a new environment, and I could tell you that it was beneficial. I was a transitional parent this school year that started. We're having them the opportunity to be there and get acclimated a little bit and start a little bit of bonding, because they're in this big, whole new world. So I'm, that was a priority for us, so I'm trying to understand how we're moving away from that a little bit. And if we're not gonna have just those transition grades come the day before school starts, I believe it was? When, since everyone gets to participate now, are you being strategic in, like, providing anything special for those students? Because I thought that was a good thing that, that we came up with.
Yes, in our initial draft, which is what you see before you, it does incorporate those transition days, so.
So the traditional, because the feedback, like you said, Board Member Brody, was, was good from the parents around, and actually all stakeholders, around the transition day. So that specifically is in there, where they will have a day where they are just there. But then the additional half-days will then be where they then come with their peers as well, but it's not for the full day to, again, adjust to the building, get used to the routine. But they still will have their specific special, and we, we have labeled it within the draft calendar as transition day for the transitional grades of Kinder VI to IX.
Okay. Thank you, the Chair. I guess I'm gonna follow up with Board Member Fortune's question about the half-day. Now, that's a half-day of instruction. I know what you need is a full day for your child to be in school. And so I'm wondering, even if you have half-day of instruction, is it anticipated that there could still be a model where a student can be at the school site for the full day? Even if it's not necessarily an instructional day for the whole day for. You have student programs. I'm just asking the question.
I think there are implications in terms of funding, staff availability, any, typically when there's a half-day, there's professional learning for the staff after school or during that time when students are released. And so I think that there are other implications in determining those models, but I don't want to send a message that we haven't considered all models. Hence the reason why we went this year to a full committee, brought all of those individuals at the table at the first site, so that we could consider what's possible. But there are implications in terms of staffing and funding in order to try to cover supervision of students, activities of students, and transportation of students if they stay in school the entire day.
Okay.
I did hear you talk about, just briefly, classroom setup. So I'm hoping, and I'm glad to hear that, I'm hoping that, once again, from Montessori, the classroom setup is very, very critical, very, very important and necessary for the success of the classroom, which is called the prepared environment. There are four areas. There's language, there's math, there's sensorial, and there's practical life in, in the primary area. So if the, and each area is, it's pretty much the curriculum, part of the curriculum for the classroom. So it's critical, and it takes a lot of time for that to be set so that you prepare the child for success, you prepare the teacher for success, the family for success. So I'm hoping that teachers will have more time as opposed to half a day, which I'm sure they were grateful for, but they definitely need more time to prepare. You know, because oftentimes, teachers, and not just Montessori, but in, in all areas, will use their own time to come in, in addition to spending their own money, to provide materials, provide, you know, make sure that the classroom is, is beautiful, is welcoming, is prepared for the students to come. So I'm hoping that that is taken into consideration when this, the calendar is finalized.
Yes, thank you for the feedback.
Any other feedback, discussion? Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Am I allowed to comment or ask questions about the harassment policy yet? Okay, so I noticed a very specific word choice in the description, and it was talking about intentional behavior that a reasonable person would find hostile, and on and on. How are we defining a reasonable person, and what protections are there for people that would be unreasonably defined as unreasonable?
Through the, oh, I mean, let's, let's.
It's a great question, and so, excuse me, I think the answer really lies in our process. And so, you know, I'm looking at Attorney Wilson, who may want to speak to that as well. But we actually have a harassment committee. So when there is an allegation of harassment, there is actually a committee that reviews the evidence of harassment and then makes a decision. And so really, because, to your point, the word reasonable, right, what's reasonable to one person may or may not be reasonable to another person, I think that's why the process by which we execute on the harassment policy is a committee, because then you're having a group of people who collectively are coming to the conclusion of whether or not something constitutes harassment or not. So I think that's the way in which we kind of operationalize the word reasonable.
And is this specifically for staff conduct, or will this be extended down to students as well?
Also, great question. So we, this is the staff harassment policy. We also do have a policy relative to harassment and bullying as it relates to students. It's not this particular policy, but we do have one.
Okay, through the Chair, I wanted to, just the point that Kira brought up, that terminology is considered like a legal standard in training. It, what the Deputy Superintendent here was talking about is how to operationalize it. I just want you to know that it's not a term that we created. It's a term that's given out, and then it's up to each organization how to operationalize it. So that's all I would add to that.
I mean, I'll just ask, add that those are really great questions. I think those are the things you should be asking, that's great critical thinking, and I'm so thrilled to see that you're asking these questions and you're one of our students.
Out of curiosity, who sits in the committee? Like who, who makes up the membership of the committee?
It's a good question. So there are several folks who, per our policy, are on the committee, and so that's our Executive Director of Human Resources, our Title IX Coordinator, I might be forgetting one more. And then we have several school administrators, several principals who sit on the committee. And again, this is for the staff harassment policy, so there's sort of district-based staff as well as school-based staff.
Ms. Brody?
I'll, I just definitely wanted to comment that I'm hoping this is a diverse group of people. Because what one perceives as harassment, I'll just leave it there, and not diverse in just their job functions, but diverse in their cultures too.
Yes.
When we're, when we're dealing with harassment, and I trust that you'll do that.
I think I would add to that, also diverse in terms of the hierarchy of where they sit within HPS, right? Not simply management level or principal level, but also like people who are interacting with students on a day-to-day basis and other staff. I think that could bring really great additional insight as well.
I'm sorry, I just have two words, cultural competency. I'm hoping that that's a factor as well.
Seeing no more buttons pressed. And I'm gonna call it now, seeing no more buttons pressed. Do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. Up next, sorry, I guess I wanted to be done. Last is the executive session, very brief discussion on the superintendent search. We will be going into executive session to discuss the executive, sorry, to discuss, I'm so tired. Oh my God, we're so close. To discuss the superintendent's search. We will be taking with us Ms. Lori Mazzuric and Ms. Christina Santiago. Do I have a motion to enter the executive session?
Moved.
So moved. Second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you for joining us tonight, and have a great evening.